Ladies and gentlemen, let me call this meeting to order. First, our reporter. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, this is the September meeting for the Valdosta County zoning motor dealers. Let me explain how we operate so you can keep up with us and understand as we proceed. I will call each case by case number and case name. Staff will come to the lectern and present their request. After they have presented the request, there will probably be questions or discussions among board members to staff. Once we have heard from staff and we think we understand, then I will ask if there is anyone here in support, or if the applicant is here, or someone representing the applicant, and would like to give us any additional information, please come to the lectern and give us the information. Again, there is probably going to be discussions, questions back and forth. Once we are satisfied we have heard that side of the case, then I will ask if there are any persons here in opposition. If there are multiple people in opposition, or multiple people that may have questions about what is being requested, please, one person come to the lectern, give us your name and address for the record. Please give us the information you would like for us to take under advisement. Once you have presented your information, there is possibly going to be discussions or questions among board members, or to the person. If there are multiple people here in opposition, we would like to know that you are here. We may have everybody stand up or something. If your opposition or your question has already been presented to us, please don't come up and give us four or five times with the same information. Once we've heard it, we will have heard it. If you feel like the information has not been brought to our attention that you think is pertinent, please come to the lectern, give us your name and address for the record, and give us that information. We do have a lengthy agenda that could run late, so we would like to try to move on if we can. Also, please give us all the information that you would like us to take under advisement if possible, so that we don't end up with rebuttal and re-rebuttal back and forth. We'd like to get it all the first time around if possible. Okay, first case we're gonna call is Lous County Case VAR 2016-14, Latisha Baker, 3941 Fender Road, Valdosta, Georgia. Carmella, you have our attention.
Good afternoon, everyone. My first case this afternoon is a variance request by Ms. Latisha Baker. Latisha is moving, is relocating to Georgia from Arkansas, and on the way here, they broke down, so she couldn't make the meeting. So she asked that we go ahead on with the variance request. But this is a variance request to our design standards for single-family homes. The property is located on Fender Road and consists of about fifty, fifty and a half acres. Subproperty is zoning R1, and within the R1 zoning, we have design standards for all of our zoning districts. And if you pay attention to the table, it's in the staff report, within the R1, your lot design has to be at least twenty-one feet wide, roof pitch has to be thirty-two, so on and so forth. She's proposing to put a single-wide manufactured home where there were one plus a double-wide, which was destroyed by fire in an off-far scene. And she's requesting to be allowed to put a single-wide book home on the property to live in. They're relocating back to Lous County. She states financial hardship as running the causes. As you can see from the zoning map, the property or the zoning that's on the south side of Fender Road is RA zoning, which is residential agriculture. That zoning will allow single wides, double wides, site-built homes, so that's why we have a mixture of housing types along Fender Road. With that, staff is recommending approval. We feel that the proposed home will land very well in this area and not be out of scale with what's already going on. So with that, we're recommending approval.
And I'm going to assume this is a picture of the book home that they've already brought in?
That is correct. That's the moment she's first.
And when I went and looked, it appeared to me at least that it's probably going to be set up where this one is. They're not planning on moving that out of the system. And it is back up in there?
Yes. Halfway, this is the block.
Yes, sir.
Any questions, any discussions from the board at this time? Thank you, Carmella. Being that Ms. Baker is not here, is there anyone here that would like to speak on her behalf or in support of this request? Is there anyone here that has questions or is opposed to this request? Was there any contact to your office, Carmella?
Yes, sir. May I?
Any other discussions from the board, ladies and gentlemen? And I entertain a request, I mean a motion, I'm sorry?
Motion to approve.
I have a motion from Mr. Alvarado.
Represented by signing criteria D.
As presented, signing criteria D. Do I have a second?
Okay.
I have a second, we can call the motion. All in favor, please raise a hand. Unanimous? Okay, the next case is VAR 2016-15, Tyler Hamby, 7235 Alzwee Road, Valdosta, Georgia. Carmella?
Yes, sir. This is a request for variance to our minimum lot width requirement. Subproperty consists of about six and a half acres and is located off of Alzwee Road. The OLC requires that within the EA zoning, that you have a lot width of two hundred and ten feet. And in this case, Mr. Tyler wishes to construct a home. However, if you look at the map there, his two hundred and ten feet lot width doesn't occur until we're about in excess of four hundred feet from the right of way. He would like to construct a home that is comparative and continually with existing homes. It's located to the north of the property. This home will be allowed, say, approximately about a hundred feet from the right of way. It will be in line with other homes in that area. So with that, staff felt he's not doing anything that's out of scale with what's already going on, and we're recommending approval of this request.
Any questions?
I have a question. How did these lots get made? I mean, how did these crazy-shaped lots that are too narrow get made?
Well, as long as you meet the minimum lot area, lot width requirement, this was once planned reform, and...
Okay, well, but is he not meeting the lot width requirement?
It meets it, but it's four hundred feet back. That's where his lot will, is two hundred and ten feet.
So doesn't it have to be at the road?
At the road, sixty.
Sixty at the road? Until you can have flat lots?
Yes.
Start flat lots in reverse?
Yeah.
Any other questions, discussions from the board? Thank you, Carmella. Is Mr. Hamby here? Would you like to speak, or is there anyone here who would like to speak?
I'm here. I think Ms. Carmella covered it pretty well.
Is there anyone else in support that would like to... Can I get your name and address for the record?
Yeah, Nathan Smith, 3890 Allen Creek Road, with Hernan Company. Also, he represents the sellers to the property. My understanding that, you know, when it was first platted out, that it was inside of the law, two hundred feet, and they moved it to ten. That's what I understand. He just wants to be in this house in line with all the other houses.
All right, he's here to answer any questions. Any questions, any discussions from the board? Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on behalf of Mr. Hamby? Is there anyone here in opposition, or does anyone have a question about what Mr. Hamby has requested? Is there any contact to your office, Carmella?
Yes, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, any other questions, discussions before I ask for a question? Can I get a motion on this request?
I make a motion to the approved signing criteria D.
I have a motion from Mr. McCall to grant a request as presented, signed by criteria D. I have a second from Mr. Alvarado. All in favor, please raise a hand. Unanimous, good luck with it, Mr. Hamby. Okay, the next case we'll call is VAR 2016-17, Union Springs subdivision LLC, Union Road A. Hyrum.
Yes, sir.
And before you start, I have a question. What happened to sixteen?
Um, they've kind of... It's coming.
Okay.
It's coming, but later.
I just was, I was concerned somehow we had lost something in translation. Yes, ma'am, Carmella?
All right, the county's last request before you is a variance, actually two variance requests by Union Springs subdivision. Subproperty is located off of Union Road, in the unincorporated area of Lous County, but within, you know, our zip code. The board, they called this request a couple of months ago, whereas they are developing a conservation subdivision. And within the standards of the conservation subdivision, there are certain guidelines you have to meet. I believe the board granted them a variance to the sanitary sewer requirement, that's in one of the standards that they're back. There are two additional standards that they are requesting for relief from. First variance is to the designation of their wetlands. As you can see, I think I put before you a larger, yes, site plan, lot layout. If you pay particularly attention to the red lines, which follows the wetlands delineation lines, one of the standards for conservation subdivisions is that any wetlands, one in flood-planted areas, ground where rich yard, has to be contained within an open space. And as you can see from the southern portion of the lot layout, their open space consists of about fifty some odd acres. But some of the wetlands kind of lead into some of the individual lots that they're trying to sell. And as per the conservation subdivision standards, can, none of the wetlands can be on any property and lots. So they're requesting a variance to that particular standard. There's about six lots where you can see where the wetlands kind of leaned in. But if you add all of those areas up, it totals less than an acre. I think it's like seventeen some of an acre, and the design question is here, they can explain that to you. The second variance is to, if you look at the cul-de-sac, there are two larger lots, lots fifteen and lots sixteen, that do not meet our minimum lot frontage requirement. In a conservation subdivision, we're required to have a minimum eighty-foot lot frontage. They're proposing sixty. So they're requesting a variance to that particular standard. That is of the opinion that developers intentionally tried to make an effort to contain most of the wetlands in their open space. And with that, we were in support of what they're proposing at this point. We had somewhat of a debate staff there with the way the lots were drawn, you know, why couldn't he follow the wetlands line? And just have a jagged, you know, property line? But it was the developers' desire to have the straight lines, what Mark Hill would do. So with that, we were in favor of both variance requests and supported, and the design question was here, if we have any specific questions.
First question I'd like to ask, what is the county's position where the road is going through the wetlands that's supposed to be delineated? How does that affect us?
I will need some help by their engineer with that, you know, mine.
Okay. Carmella, before we answer that, is there any other questions, any discussion from the board for Carmella, or she will still be available?
I have one question about the cul-de-sac laws.
Yes, ma'am.
Were it not for the wetlands just being on the back, would sixty-foot have met the minimum requirement for the roads running?
No, they still needed eighty.
So the twenty-foot had variance that they're requesting for law has nothing to do with the wetlands, it's just that they're requesting that for law?
That is correct. We even offered, you know, maybe he shipped that off a lot, he made a lot or two, he shipped it back, but that was part of our conversation, you know, just moving some lot lines.
Well, and so you have the red line drawn here where the eighty-foot is, why can't they make that eighty-foot, make the circle a little bigger? And those lots become fractionally smaller, there are more of them than one and two acres anyway.
There's a way, you know, it's just their preference.
That's not hardship though. Okay, I have a question about the wetlands on the properties. We're not gonna find that the property owners provide these properties who are backed up to this nice wetlands, all of a sudden are finding that they have, you know, a lake in the backyard on, you know, a hundred-year flood, and maybe they wish they had bought wetlands in their yard?
I'm sure the survey that they have will depict those wetlands, I mean, they'll know that.
Well, we could be helping to protect them by not putting it on their property, right? By saying it has to be in the conservation area, rather than letting it be on somebody's part of a property, said wetlands.
Yes, ma'am.
That is an option.
Any other questions? I got one question. Can these wetland areas within the lots be built upon?
No, they would have to meet Army Corps of Engineers standards. If it's done a certain way, as long as they get permit from the Army Corps, it's a possibility, but chances are they won't be able to do that without an engineer involved.
Specifically on lot thirty-five and thirty-six, where it appears that the wetland area crosses the road?
Yes.
How would they, how would they put a driveway on those lines? Could you put a driveway over the wetland area?
I'm not sure, but he's here, his question is here, ask about. And we, I mean, we had some talk with them about just reconfiguring the layout to go around those wetlands, but I'm sure they have a responsible...
Okay, any other questions or discussions? Yes, sir. Your turn. Name and address for the record, please.
For the record, my name is Clayton Milligan. I'm at 3998 Interperimeter Road, Valdosta, Georgia. I'm with LEA Level Engineering, representing the client, which is Union Springs LLC. Carmella did a good job summarizing kind of where we're, where we're coming from. Just briefly, this is the first conservation subdivision that's, that's come through since the ULDC was put in place in 2006, so we've been working closely with them. This is the first kind of real test of how to directly actually apply, you know, subdivision that's coming through. I'll address the cul-de-sac first, if that's okay. Every other, and as the previous case she mentioned, but sixty-foot road frontage is what every other zoning category requires, I believe. And so for some reason, when the conservation, when that portion of code is written, it's got an eighty-foot road frontage, that's not a lot width. We still meet all the lot width requirements because they're the bigger cul-de-sac lots, but this is just the road frontage requirement that we're requesting a variance on to. And we could, as we've mentioned, put a jog in the right of way and follow the red line that you're looking at with that right of way to make it work. It's just, we felt like from a continuity standpoint down the road, that it would just follow the conventional-sized cul-de-sac that we always do everywhere else, keep the right of way smaller, and go where we're showing the yellow lines on the exhibit that you're looking at.
I have a question about that.
Okay.
On lot number fourteen, what's the road frontage on fourteen?
We've actually, we've adjusted lots, we've worked with them, we've adjusted fourteen, lot fourteen, so it has eighty-foot.
So fourteen and seventeen have eighty-foot, and sixteen and fifteen don't, and that circle isn't big enough for all four of them to have eighty-foot?
We made everything work, and I watched fifteen and sixteen is what we kind of, we got to be in, and couldn't, couldn't get the eighty-foot lot frontage. We have to bump the...
So you'd have to make the circle totally bigger on everybody's... Those lots are...
And those are, I guess that was one of my, those are some of the bigger lots, so we're not asking for smaller lots. We're not trying to squeeze more lots into the...
Right, well, those are, those aren't some of the bigger lots, so they could, could make the circle bigger.
Yes, we could, the right of way line could follow the red line that you're looking at, and we would, we just didn't. From a surveying, plating standpoint, it's gonna look odd, but it would work.
I have a question.
Question.
Carmella, why the ULDC, if all other zoning districts have sixty-foot road frontage, does this one have eighty?
This is a recommendation from a consultant to do it this way, because a conservation subdivision, the idea is to cluster your lots, so you have smaller lots and not bigger lots, and...
Right, so the, so the smaller road frontage would make sense, eighty, sixty rather than eighty, for clustering the lots?
Right, you're right. This is something we, this is the first...
It was the first one?
Yes.
So that was kind of our thinking as well, like, you'd think it would be smaller, I don't know, the typo that was originally put through, or where that eighty-foot came in.
I apologize, I needed to clarify. I thought that's, that's the question that I was asking about the cul-de-sac, was if it were not the wetlands, would sixty feet meet the road frontage? And I thought you said, no, it would not, but it will, it would, were it not for the...
No, no, if it's not in the conservation, sixty would be fine, because they are just in conservation, it's triggered eighty.
Okay, so it's not the wetlands, it's the conservation? That's true. Okay.
Okay. The county, the road is going through?
Yes.
Explain that to us.
The road is going through the wetlands. We've gotten what we call a jurisdictional determination from the Army Corps of Engineers. And so the line that, I don't know if you can see it up here, but the tan, tan-colored line that goes through there, and then it's red where it's encroaching on the lots, that's the actual field delineated weapon line, I think. The slide that's up there on the screen, the dash hatch area, is what we call the national weapons inventory line, so that's kind of a bird's eye GIS map, where they think the weapons are. We actually went in, this is field delineated, Army Corps of Engineers approved, they said, yes, we agree, this is where the line is, so what you're looking at on your...
That orange line.
The orange line, yes, is the actual... Now, I changed to red where it's encroaching on the lots, just for clarity, but where it's not encroaching on lots, it's orange, it has that orange weapon hatch behind it.
Right, well, so in the middle of, I'm gonna say, south of the road, in what's not a lot, but in the conservation area, the orange line sort of comes down into a U, and then it comes back up, and then the lot line goes straight, and the, the wetlands on the red comes into the back of lot number fifty-six.
Right.
So the part that's next to fifty-six, that road part, that's not in the wetlands, just that little bit that's by lots thirty-three and thirty-six of the road is in the wetlands.
Yes, and I would, the portion of the road that went through the wetland, we're actually disturbing less than a tenth of an acre of wetland, which falls within the Army Corps requirements of, we don't have to, we don't have to pay mitigation, we just have to document to the Corps that we're disturbing less than a tenth of an acre. So there's actually an old spoil pile in the middle there that the Army Corps did not count as a wetland, there's this big pile of dirt right where our road went through, so we aligned our road up with that dirt to minimize the impact to the wetland area surrounding it. Where you see the red line where it's squared off there on lots thirty-five and thirty-six, that's an old irrigation pit that was dug years ago, but the way the rules are written, it's got standing water in it now, so it falls under Army Corps jurisdiction, so they claim.
So it's gonna be in somebody's front yard?
So there's that, where the red line is shown, yes, between lots thirty-five and thirty-six, that's, that's a jurisdictional weapon, that's...
It's a personal choice, to buy the lot or buy the one thing.
So, from our perspective, we can draw the lot lines correctly on the red lines that you're looking at. We can make a lot lines, follow the wetland lines, the field delineated line. Somebody went out there five years from now and redelineated the weapon, it's probably gonna change, you know, two, three foot, maybe, when we, the wetland line's not, it's not, it's not a part of concrete line in the sand, so to speak, it, it fluctuates. But this is, the Army Corps jurisdiction is good for, for five years, so that's what we develop off of, and we get a jurisdiction. But from a development standpoint, we would like, in a surveying standpoint, a plat standpoint, we like straight lines, and we felt we were well within the spirit of what was trying to be accomplished is, okay, because before, we worked with the county, we had lots forty-three and fifty-six, they're actually touched, we just had one lot line in the middle, in between lots forty-three and fifty-six. So we've actually revised our plat, we put a gap in there, we moved them, you know, moved it out, and pretty much, kind of took an average and ran our straight line as close to that, you know, the delineated wetland line as we could. And rather than have between lots thirty-five and thirty-six this odd little box leftover of open space, just go ahead and put rectangular lots for thirty-five and thirty-six. So whether they owned it or not, it's still gonna be in their front yard.
Can we go back to that question that we asked, can they put, can they cut down whatever in that little wetland area and put a shed or their driveway or accessory?
You cannot, unless, you cannot, for Army Corps, this is, this is Army Corps jurisdiction, so you cannot disturb the ground at all within wetland, but you can't.
So where are they gonna put the driveways on lots thirty, thirty...
These are...
Thirty...
How wide are these lots?
Thirty-five and thirty-six.
You'd almost have to, and I'm speaking out of turn, you'd almost have to have a driveway between thirty-four and thirty-five right up the line, and thirty-six and thirty-seven.
Keep in mind, keep in mind, these lots are a hundred and sixty-eight feet wide, a hundred and sixty, lot thirty-five is a hundred and sixty-eight feet wide, lot thirty-six is a hundred and sixty-five feet wide. So the wetland goes about half a lot, so I've still got eighty feet of non-wetland road frontage that we can put a driveway to to get to, to get to the house. On lots thirty-five and thirty-six.
Okay, imagine that I'm not the original homeowner who buys lot number thirty-five, who knows that I've got wetlands in my front yard and I'm not supposed to do anything. Imagine that I'm buyer number two or three down the line, and I go, you know, these trees in the front yard are not eligible for the contract. I mean, what's to prevent this one happening in the future? I mean, covenants and blah blah, but, you know, if you go two or three hours in, and people don't pay attention anymore.
Right, I mean, my answer to that question is no different than, you know, any wetland anywhere else in the county. It's protected by Army Corps, whether somebody goes in there and, you know, disturbs that wetland. There's existing provisions in there, if, if they're caught, there's, there's consequences for, from Army Corps.
And, and based on history that I am aware of in other areas, it's pretty much a complaint you drew.
Right.
You know, if somebody does something in there and nobody says anything, no harm, no effect.
Right.
But as soon as somebody raises a red flag and says something, then somebody's got an answer, and that person is gonna be the second or the third owner, and they gonna say, I didn't know, and we, and at that point, they gonna say, well, but you gotta fix it.
We've been involved in several cases in Lous County where Army Corps come in, and, you know, trees have been cut down, but homeowners have been required to plant back, do mitigation plans, plant stuff back, and it's, it's costly.
This delineation you said is only locked in for five years, so it could be dry five years from now, and they could hire a surveyor to come in and have their, front of their yard redelineated to say it is no longer in wetlands, and then they're free to do whatever they want. And then they're free to do whatever they want.
Or it could potentially go the other direction too, so they could have more of your yard wet, I mean, it's...
So is that all an irrigation ditch that home, is that lot shaped like that, has that square shape?
That's what has that square shape.
But that's considered wetland even though it's man-made?
Yes.
If it's touched and in water in it, they gonna claim it.
If I designed it, I've had, I've had situations here in Lounts County where I've designed a detention pond, a full-on fenced-in detention pond. And five years later, it's a wetland, it's a jurisdictional wetland, we can't even go in there and modify the detention pond. I'd be happy to be able to call your comments.
Does the, uh, does the provision for a tenth of an acre, um, to be developed, um, just with the letter to the Corps of Engineers, does that provision apply to the homeowner?
No, they look at a, uh, development as a whole, so our letter goes on the record. Let's say somebody buys lot thirty-six and says, hey, I'm only gonna disturb, you know, a tenth of an acre. They're gonna, they have a GIS-based record, so they know what areas they've already approved stuff. And they'll go in and say, no, we've already approved up, you know, a tenth of an acre's already been used up, for lack of a better term.
Oh, outside of this ordinance designation for conservation easement, um, it is not uncommon to have property lines extend into and across wetlands and/or state waters or other conservation areas like that, correct?
That is correct, this is specific to the conservation subdivision regulations, otherwise, I mean, lot lines can cross wetlands, state waters, um, you know, any of those features in any of the other zoning designations.
If, if approved, how would you address this wetland from an engineering standpoint? Would there have to be a culvert crossing the road right there?
We have a double, I believe it's a double twenty-four inch culvert design if that wetland crossed right there. Cause that is, even if there wasn't a wetland there, that's a natural low point for, where that field comes, and so we've got drainage coming through there and we've designed the pipes to adequately convey that stormwater underneath the road, not over the road.
Any other questions, any other discussions?
I wanted to, but you brought up a question earlier about flooding, potential flooding. This is outside the conservation subdivision, but Lounts County has requirements in place that we have to establish a finished floor elevation that's two feet above the owner of your high water mark on any lot, whether it's in a conservation subdivision or elsewhere. So on our, our plat, the final plat, we'll have on lots that are adjacent to, um, or wetland, we actually put on the plat finished floor elevation and actually get a specific elevation. So when the builders go to build, they know the finished floor's gotta be a certain elevation.
So when, when the lake comes up around these people's houses, not the whole of them?
Right, right, so there's, Lounts County has provisions in place to address that.
Any other questions, any other discussions? Thank you, sir. Is anyone else here in support of this application or anyone have information they'd like to give us concerning this? Is anyone here in opposition to this request or has questions about what is being requested?
My name's John, I can do six-one for a Paul Road. Uh, we have a twelve-hundred-foot property line that we share, up in there cleaning it years. Uh, spoke about this at the beginning, for the request of rezoning, mentioned the concerns that we had as far as the traffic and drainage, septic tanks installed on life, uh, taxes increased, included more runoff. And, uh, none of these things seem to bother anybody when they were considering these things. The developer himself is aware of everything that's on that plat, when he made it out, he presented it. He knew what a conservation subdivision required and he made that plat according to it. Now he was gonna change everything. Uh, the roads are already in, I don't think the gentleman made that clear, these roads aren't going to be included, they're in, they're paved. So they taking upon themselves, go ahead and do these things, I reckon they understood that y'all were gonna approve them.
Well, I understand that other than these couple of variances, they can do what they wanna do as far as putting this in by right, by code. The only, the only thing they'd have to do is they would have to redesign a couple of these lots to avoid these couple of small spots, otherwise they wouldn't have to come before this board at all.
They, they knew that when they made these, uh, properties, like you suggested earlier, they knew these things, they knew it was a sixty-foot frontage, they knew it was a eighty-foot required. This is a conservation subdivision, they knew that when they went and did all these drawings.
Yes, sir.
That's right, and then they just took it upon themselves, go ahead and do it, and then come back and ask for a variance.
Yep, yes, sir, you have two lots out of the entire bunch that doesn't need code. If we deny this, if we just say, you can't, you don't get either one of the variances that you're asking for, that doesn't kill it. All they gotta do is go back and redraw a couple of lot lines and they can do this without asking anybody.
Yes, sir, I'm quite aware, I am not gonna kill this subdivision, I understand that very much so. But, uh, I'd like, I mentioned a couple of things here also, uh, got on the EPA website, okay, and I looked at wetlands, and it, uh, this is quoted from their website. The basic premise of the program is that no discharge of dredge or film material be permitted if a practical alternative exists that is less damaging to the aquatic environment. The nation's waters would be significantly degraded, also, it's also stated there that when you apply for a permit, you should show that you have, uh, to the extent practical, practical, that you've taken steps to avoid the impact on the wetlands, that you've minimized potential impact on the wetlands, and that you provide a compensation, okay? Like, again, these people knew these things, the roads are in, uh, I'd just like to suggest that if you go along and start making changes now after they've already done things, what are we gonna continue to approve these people to do? Especially after they've already taken upon themselves to do it, without coming before you, even asking these things.
Well, at this point, like I said, they have been in discussion with staff. The couple of infringements that they have asked for, and I know it wrong, I'm not saying it will be granted, I'm just saying, if this board says no to both variances, all they gonna do is redraw a couple of lots and then they can do it by law.
Okay, well, I suggest that you make them do that, instead of just granting variances, cause that's all...
I understand.
They're gonna come to here, like I say, if they know ahead of time, they're gonna come up here and do everything they want. And I suggest instead of me taking time off from work to come up here and argue pointlessly, I suggest you just go ahead and give them everything they want today where they don't have to come back up here and ask for another thing.
I understand, I hear what you're saying, sir, and at the same time, this board does not always grant everything that people ask of them.
One, one thing, I just found out, I wasn't invited to the, uh, the request about the septic tanks, and I'm a property owner there, I didn't get that, okay?
That is the Health Department, sir, that's not us.
The, the septic tanks have not even been approved for these lots. And I, I, I live there, I know how wet it is.
If the, if the septic tanks are not allowed, they will not per, according to Health Department regs, they will not grant a building permit for that lot. That is Health Department regs, that's not us. Is anyone else here in opposition or has questions about what is being requested? Yes, ma'am, can I get your name and address for the record?
Uh, Victor Paul, six-two-zero-eight In Road, New York.
Yes, ma'am.
Where the other property owner decided. And I do know that this land, uh, has runoff. So the wetlands is on my property too.
Yes, ma'am.
I mean, the only... I mean, they've already paved, so the wetland is right here, it's already paved in.
They have a, a statement from the Corps of Engineers allowing them to do that.
But why were they already paved, why was the road already paved before, they just paved it?
They already had the, the agreement from the Corps of Engineers for the road.
But my question is, before the meeting, why was the road paved and this was supposed to be approved from y'all's foot?
Well, the road is not being approved from us.
But it's part of the, it's part of the wetlands, correct?
The county part of the road is county and that was approved by the Corps of Engineers for them to put that piece of road across there. We don't have any, that's not our responsibility.
But shouldn't it already, if y'all were doing the variances, shouldn't the road been on hold until y'all approved it?
It's not required.
It's not required, and septic tanks are not required until, if a later...
I tell you, the Health Department comes out and looks at it and they...
So when, when are we gonna get it without approval, I mean, because...
Before they can build on any lot.
But my question is, I, I mean, I have three landscaping permits, my question is, if I know that this property floods, it floods my property, my trailer sinks, I have to hire somebody to lift it up every two or three years. If this property, I have, lot one through fourteen, I'll be looking at, at least one through eight. Why not get the septic tank approved and have all your approvals before you go ahead and approve all this?
I can't answer that question as far as why it's set up that way, normally, they don't, the Health Department does not come out and approve the septic tank until they start pulling a permit to build on that lot.
But wouldn't it make more sense if y'all had all the approvals first?
Ma'am, I'm not arguing that point, that's in the agreement, but that's just the, the way that it's set up in Lounts County, and I don't know about in the other counties, but the way it's set up, the Health Department does not come out to determine where you can put a well, where you can put a septic tank, and where you can put a house, until they have plans and until they start looking at, this is what we're going to do on this lot.
Okay, cause I see it, probably half of my property's probably not gonna per unless they're gonna do a, a septic tank, and that's all the...
Well, that's, that does not fall into this board's jurisdiction, that's county, uh, that's the county commissioners, the Health Department, the engineer.
Are y'all gonna have another meeting on that?
Uh, this board does not meet with them on these things. We, we deal only with the variances once they figure out, this is what we want to do and the county says, you can do this, you can do that, you can do the other, you can't do this, you can't do that without a variance. Or you can't do this at all because there's no condition for a variance.
What's mean, I mean, I've lived out there my whole life, it wouldn't make sense if they get...
I understand exactly what you're saying, it's just, that's not the way it's done in Lounts County, and this is the first one of these that we've done. It is possible, maybe probable, that once they start talking about some of the things they've encountered here, some of the rules may change.
What about the, um, traffic and the thermalizing, y'all, when the money...
That's, you know, if they meet the requirements without any request for variance, if they redesign the lots slightly or even do without one or two or three lots to avoid the wetlands in the conservation, they can do this without asking for any variance. That's, that's what I'm saying, is they can do this.
I, I know they do it, I mean, I, I hear them, six o'clock to seven o'clock.
They, they can do it by right, and if we turn both these variances down, that does not stop this.
I understand that, but I mean, why not ask for the, the perk test and, and the lots, I mean, that would give them the lot size and where they put the lots, to me, that makes sense.
I understand what you're saying, it's just not the way it's done in Lounts County right now, it might change in the future, but it's not the way it's done right now. Is anyone else here in opposition? Okay, Eric, I have a question.
Eric, how, how much of the wetlands total acreage is being requested as a variance, remind us?
I believe it was, uh, seven tenths of an acre total would fall, end up falling within a flat lot.
Of all, all of those lots in total, seven tenths of an acre?
Yes.
Thank you.
And Carmella, correct me if I'm wrong with the statements that I just made, if, hang on there, if this board says no, all they got to do is get level, go in there and redraw the lines and they can still do this.
That's correct, okay.
Okay, you wanna make sure I wasn't off base when I said that, Eric, you have something else to add?
I was just gonna re- address this deceptive issue since it came up with that.
Why do I have here?
Um, we have already done a, and this is, this is the responsibility of the developer, so anybody in Lounts County, you can take a risk and platter lots without looking at the souls, but the Health Department's gonna come out there and if they don't per, you're not gonna go to the house on that lot. We had taken the extra step, we've already done the other four soul surveys, the Health Department has already been out there, has looked at all of these lots, so we've actually, we did our homework beforehand to make sure we weren't running that issue ahead of time. So we have been addressing that, but it's not required, it's not county required.
Okay, so in effect, the developer and the Health Department and level engineering have discussed this, even though they don't have permits for each and every lot from the Health Department, it is the opinion of the Health Department that they are confident that at least most of them, if not all of them, will be conditioned to make or resell the lot.
That would be accurate, they are still gonna go out there and the Health Department, my thing, are gonna feel horrible about every lot and tell you exactly where you're gonna feel, and go and it's gonna work, okay?
Okay, um, just, just to clarify, because of some of the statements that were made earlier, um, the United States Corps of Engineers did receive the application for, uh, for, um, changes to the wetlands prior to the road going in, and they approved it prior to the road going in.
Yes, the, the county will not approve it, so they can structure the lines without that...
And that, that, that approval from the Corps of Engineers was in hand?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions, any other discussions? Was any response to your office, Carmella, on this?
Yes, sir, I did get, um, not only a call from the supply team, it's Becky, but I, I did get a, uh, call from another adjoining property owner in opposition to the request.
Okay. Okay, any other discussions, any other questions, does everybody think they understand the pros and cons and the ramifications of what we've talked about and the options that you have? Basically, you can accept it as is, you can accept one without the other, you can, you can deny it totally, you can modify it, it's a wide open slate for the board. So when someone makes a motion, please make it very specific as to what we're voting on. One more question, Mr. Porter.
Um, in a conservation subdivision, how much of the property total must be in conservation?
At its forty percent, and they've exceeded it.
They've exceeded it?
Yes.
Do we, by how much they exceed it?
Forty-six percent in conservation.
Any other questions before I call the question, any discussion? And I get a motion on this request. Your motion needs to specify both of the items in question, the minimum front footage on lots fifteen and sixteen, and the designation... and the designation of the open space, which is included in a couple of lots, or four or five lots.
Can we do them separately, or do you want to do it?
Well, in the past, we've usually done them combined because it is one case with one request with two variances. However, you can make the motion any way you wish.
Well, the minimum road frontage, I think that we need to change the, the ULDC. I think we need to change the ULDC so that it's in conformity with all of the rest of the road frontage that we require for every other lot. So if all the rest of the lots say sixty, then this section should say sixty. So I want to make a motion to approve that they can be sixty, with the note to staff that we should... I mean, that's how we find things are wrong in the ULDC, is they, they come and then we go, well, it doesn't, doesn't work.
Especially the intent, the conservation subdivision is to cluster. That makes no sense to have a larger road frontage requiring in the whole state.
Can I please ask one thing real quick? Please, please, round over.
So I would make a motion to approve the minimum road frontage at sixty, and that, uh, staff will to make it in accordance.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Mr. Porterman, grant the variance for the minimum road frontage on lots fifteen and sixteen at sixty feet. And that'd be subject to criteria...
D.
Criteria D. I have seconds. All in, um, no, we would have seconds. Ms. Fowler, you have a second. Okay, all in favor of this motion, please raise a hand and hold it. Okay, unanimously told. And we still have to deal with the variance number one designation of open space. And I get a motion on that part of this request. In this case, in the lack of a motion, I assume that we have a no situation.
Further discussion?
Is any further discussion to resolve this issue? Because without a motion, in essence, it is laid in the law.
I guess, just in kind of throwing things out, making it help us talk about, there's not a lot of land per lot that is, that is being affected. To me, the, the most egregious is lots thirty-five and thirty-six, because they're in the front. And, and Mr. Strickland is correct that people can choose whether or not to purchase that lot or not, or go, go on the way. But I think that Mr. Porterman is also correct that, that most people are not going to know what they can do with wetlands or not. And, and part of our job is to protect our citizens. Redrawing, that, those would be some funky lots on thirty-five and thirty-six. The rest of them aren't bad, and Eric, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but there doesn't look like, they're, they're all over acre lots. It would just be a little odd shape in the back of the lots. But they would still look like they would all be able to have a minimum of an acre. And then, you know, the, the real presidencies says with this, in having wetlands, they're gonna struggle to get a mortgage, or they're gonna have to have a flood insurance on it. So that, again, makes me want to protect them, since it is such a little amount. To have those lots redrawn, I would rather see them being funky than to have the wetlands on them. But again, it's, it's, it's so minimal, and it, it doesn't affect.
I agree that, that, I agree that thirty-five and thirty-six of them, most of the biggest ones, to have that in the backyard is, it's not good.
Do you want to make a motion that that part is denied and that one redraw?
And then they can come back, but...
No, it's redraw.
If they redraw, they won't have to come back.
If they redraw, they just got to draw it so it becomes, because that's the other side of this coin now. If you, if we deny this, they can't bring it back for one year.
But they wouldn't have to bring it back.
They wouldn't have to bring it back if they redesigned, redrawed the lots to take the wetlands out and reflect the six lots or whatever it is. If they redraw them, redraw the lines, then it doesn't matter. They don't have to come back and force it again.
What's the minimum lot size for a conservation, no, for a conservation subdivision?
They can go down to two thousand square feet.
But then we have septic tank issues, that, that there's minimum lots.
So an acre is the minimum if they're gonna have a septic tank.
You have a septic tank, you tell them that.
So let's just look at lot number forty-one. If, if instead of drawing the, um, on the yellow line that's there, if you draw along the red line, and then, you draw along that red line, straight to the corner, you're not gonna be too small there.
Eric, can you tell us whether or not these, any of these lots would be less than the...
Yeah, if, if this clarifies, if it helps, if the motion is denied, the red lines are gonna be the lot lines, and we'll move forward with the red lines being the lot lines. And we'll just have funky, jagged lot line. But if it's denied, the red lines are gonna be the lot lines. If it's approved, the yellow line's gonna be the lot line.
On lot thirty-five and thirty-six, how much of the area, how, how big is the wetland area on each one of those lines?
We have outside of the wetland, and this is required by the, again, by the septic regs and the well regs. We have to have an acre outside of the wetlands. So if we draw the lot lines on the red lines, I still have one plus acres on every lot.
Essentially, the lot layout will remain exactly as it is.
The, the line will just be the property line. Right. The red line will be the property lines to the yellow lines that we're showing.
Okay. Do we have a motion to deny? I'm, I'm just asking that, ma'am.
Yes, I, I'll make a motion to deny variance question number one, designation of open space.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to deny the number one variance, the designation of open space on the few existing lots that have wetlands on them. Do, do I have a second? I have seconds, Ms. Fowler. All in favor, raise a hand and hold it. All opposed? We have a tie. I get the vote. I will vote in support of the motion. Variance number one is denied, and they can redraw the lots, and they'll be good. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on. The next case that we will hear is city case, application two oh one six dash oh five. Ray Connor, two six oh two Lakewood Drive, Valdosta. Ms. Tracy, you have floor.
Thank you. Okay, the park city case in front of you is from Mr. Ray Connor. It is for twenty-six oh two Lakewood Drive, which is a large single tenant household. Um, consists of about a third of an acre. The reason it's in front of you is because the applicant replaced a, apparently, well, according to Lount County Public, what was a twenty-five sixteen carport. He replaced it with a, a larger carport.
Color?
Larger, twenty-six foot, about thirty-one foot, um, carport structure. He replaced it very, very close to the existing, where the old, where the previous carport was. Very close to the existing footprint. A little bit bigger, but very close to dimensionally a waking property line where the old lot was, which poses a problem now. Apparently, the older carport was permitted in about nineteen ninety-six, according to Lount County Public. Times changed, regulations changed. Twenty-sixteen says an accessory structure such as a carport has to be at least ten feet away from a side and rear property line. From his rear property line, he's about thirteen feet away from the property line. No problem there. From the side property line, he is on that particular property line. No deviation, no space from that particular property. So he is asking for a ten-foot side door variance for that particular property. Staff reviewed it, understand the situation. It's at the end of his driveway. It's very close in proximity to what the previous carport was, but again, regulations have changed over time. Staff reviewed it, did not find hardship, and were given permission.
Okay, question?
Um, if the old carport was there and came and asked to change, it would be a non-conforming structure?
Yes, ma'am.
And if he came and asked for a modification to a non-conforming structure, we would be, um, that would be what we would be looking at, the, the...
The, the fine modification, so I understand the logic. Are, are we talking about taking away the old one and putting the new one in, or are we talking about an addition to?
We're, we're talking about, he's, he's gonna make the one that he has there bigger.
Yep, he were to make the existing one bigger, maybe an addition, maybe moving over, you know, a couple of holes one way or the other. He couldn't get any closer to the septic than he already was. In other words, thirteen feet would have to stay, it couldn't be one hundred and fifteen feet. And he couldn't approach it for the septic than he already was.
Okay, and does, does the current configuration, is it closer than it was?
Apparently, it was...
You don't know because it's...
That lot. Also, keep in mind, all bets are off when he took away the old one.
It's not non-conforming anymore.
It's not non-conforming anymore. It's back to before.
How, how big was the old one? Was it a, a double? A double vehicle?
The old one was twenty by sixteen.
As best we can tell, Lount County, he kind of like had it pegged at twenty-four by sixteen.
And what is this one?
It is twenty-six feet by thirty-one feet. You're looking at eight hundred and six square feet compared to what was about three and a half.
Okay. Any other questions before I make a couple of points?
I want to know, are there height requirements also?
There, there are. An accessory structure can't be any taller than the primary. There, that is not an issue here. The, the proposed structural, the existing structure is within a few inches of the house, and it's, has, as we can now, is not.
Okay, uh, clarification, or to make sure that we all understand. The concrete slab is not a problem. The slab can be poured all the way up to the property.
Yes, sir.
You just can't have the building on it within ten feet of the property.
Yes, the carport is being changed, so it's...
Uh, we meet that back, or he meets that back in the back, so that's not a question. That's not a question.
Thirteen feet versus...
If this board, and this may be a long time to put it out, but I'm gonna put it out anyway. If the board votes to deny the request, he still can go in there, modify what he has, and bring it off the property line ten foot and one inch. And put it back up, and that would mean he would be parking the camper under the shed, parking the truck on the path.
Get his, get his permit and move the, remove the structure over, that's his decision.
Oh, okay. Let me say, that is...
Doesn't make it go away, just makes it move down there.
It doesn't make it any shorter. It's still gonna be that high. He can build it that high by right. He just is gonna have to move his host ten foot from the property line, and then he meets, he doesn't have to ask for anything. Okay, any other questions, any other discussions before we proceed? Anyone here would like to give me additional, give the board additional information on this case?
Very welcome.
Yep. That's, that's your cue. Come up and give us your two cents for it.
Good afternoon. Most of y'all, I mean, my name is Ray Connor. I live at twenty-six oh two Lakewood Drive. My wife and I are sitting down, applying for this variance. What we're dealing with, folks, is, we've been there for twenty-seven years. This isn't something where we just moved in the neighborhood and began, we're trying to change the neighborhood. We've been there, great thing, that sort of stuff. What we're doing, we bought the RV with the intention of getting back to the town. Making sure this is what we wanted to do, have a close foot, that sort of stuff. We built it on top of the existing slab that was there, the two-car garage. Most of y'all know what I do for a living. I park my work car under it, and I've always driven a truck, truck on, or a work car, full fed garage. That's what I'm, I had that facility. The addition went, and I've got a picture of it, it goes literally on the line where the previous slab was at in lots. Tracy says the, the rules have changed since then, where I didn't have it in the nineties as far as handling the slab there, but, no, sure. Anyway, this is a picture looking from the center of the road back at the RV and the slab. Shows that it was, the new slab is exactly on the property line, or on the driveway line as the previous one was. Before, there was a, um, utility building in back of the slab, in back of the two-car garage, and then there was a fence line. What I've done is taken down the utility building, moved away from the property line, and built the slab, and then built the cover on top of the slab. The problem we've run into, and I didn't, I knew there was a slope there, but I didn't realize how much of the slope was. Not only have I got a slope going away from the house carports, I also have a slope going to the back of the property line. And there's a slight incline where we built the slab going onto it, right there where the carports are. At the back, it is two foot, almost three foot, oh, two foot eight inches tall. So it's a, it's a healthy slab, believe me. It's a lot more slab than I wanted to pay her back, as far as that's concerned. We had built the bank, obviously. I thought I was in compliance because the compliance also says I had to be in the rear of the yard in order to have this type of vehicle parked at the house. So we built it in towards the backyard area of the house, being in line with that regulation. We, um, have approached, I approached both property owners, um, Dodd, Ben, Barbara Hacker lives in April, Jimmy Barker's at work. I have a letter from her. As far as the variance, she is the one that is directly affected by the variance. Barbara and I have always had a privacy fence between the two of us. I've agreed. She states in her letter, she doesn't, um, she doesn't complain about the variance, and she doesn't complain about the slab or the building. And I've told her upfront, I will build the property fence, the privacy fence back, just like it was. I'm waiting until I get all the paperwork in place before I spend any more money at where we're at, as far as this is concerned. I'm gonna build, put the privacy fence back in place. At this point, we've got the, I'm, I realize I'm in compliance with the variance, but like I said, I'm trying to be the good neighbors as far as this is concerned, and make it to where there's a buffer. I offered to build this buffer when I was talking to the Youngs and other folks as far as... far as a buffer on the rear side of it. I realize that there is a step-down gradient on the backside of the property. If you get in Dot's backyard, you've got a step-down between the fence line and the pool, there's another step-down between the pool and the back of the house, and there's another step-down by the time you get to her front yard. There's a lot of step-downs, so it's standing above it. What I've offered to do is come in and put cedar trees, there's a couple of different ones. There was even an article in the newspaper recently about conservation, a guy said that these trees grow well in this area, and quoting him, it will go twenty to forty foot in mature level. This tray, or this cover is listed as a twelve-foot cover. I reel it, and that's at the bottom of the brace. The trailer is thirteen and a half foot tall, so what I have to do is come over from the side of it, and it's at center point, it's just under, it's about fourteen and a half foot tall. With the added two and a half foot of slab, it gets it up there to sixteen, above sixteen feet. I understand all of it, that's the reason for, for saying that I plant the cedars as far as the back property line in order to create a buffer so that they won't see the back of my trailer, basically. And, um, that sort of stuff. Got additional letters from the neighbor on the other side of me, and also from one across the street, I missed one of them, like me, in the job, it's hard to catch, the two of us. Um, twenty-six hundred is one of the neighbors that's on the other side from the residence, he provided letters. One of the people that's gonna be speaking in opposition is across the street, he's president of homeowners association, so they're in support of that. I understand it is different for our neighborhood, and that sort of stuff. Some of the, I got a copy of the report that was filed, and as such, I know some of the concerns that were raised by the neighbors and that sort of stuff. Drainage is one of the concerns. Drainage, this past storm that went through wasn't any worse than it has been always, as far as this is concerned. Privacy fence on the back line, and actually, the drainage is not gonna go toward Dot and the neighbor behind her, it goes toward Barbara Hacker's house, as far as it goes, to the north of us. Danger of wind, the windstorm we experienced with this last hurricane, by the bad as it's gonna get, usually around here unless you got a tornado. No damage, no structure damage to the cover, as far as that's concerned. I don't know what else to say, I've got pictures that will show that you could barely see the RV from the street side in front of Dot Young's house. This is something that sent in our plan, and we'll do it. I think so, we're planning on having a RV. If we don't go from here, we'll deal with it as we need to. And I got a question for y'all at the same time. If you don't approve it, and that's possible, I understand. If I come in, if I come in and create that ten-foot variance to have a shelter there, that's all that's required, correct?
That was the point that I was making...
So I don't have to put a fence, I don't have to put a buffer, or I don't have to do anything?
Because, and, and that's the point that I was trying to make sure that not only the board member remembered that, but people in the audience, that what we are faced with is, if you take the building, if you take the building down in its entirety, there's nothing that stops you from parking the RV there. It's still gonna be the same RV, it's gonna, it'll be in the same place, it's just not gonna have the roof over, it's gonna go to seed. If you took it down in its entirety, then you don't have to put a privacy fence, you don't have to put, uh, trees or vegetative buffering or anything like that.
What if I put a shelter ten foot over?
That's, that's the other point that I was making. The, the regulations say you cannot build within ten feet of the property line. That doesn't mean your slab, the slab does not count as a building. If you measure over what it takes, measure ten feet, and rebuild that side wall, and shorten your roof line, and you, you met the intent of the regulations, you can still have a building which you, which the RV is under, you would have to park your truck on the slab without roofing. That you can do by right. And that's, I just want everybody to understand, that is one option, you won't change the aesthetics, you'll still see the roof line, you'll still see the RV, but you will delete it.
So there's, there's no LVR provision then, would prohibit the parking of an RV on that property? What about restrictive covenants of the subdivision? Is anybody, can help, it's allowed under that?
Okay, based on that, restrictive covenants is different than zoning regulations. Restricted covenants, we don't have anything, we cannot grant adherence to a restricted covenant, we can't do anything to that, that would be up to the homeowners association, and if the restrictive covenants are even still in effect, because restrictive covenants, and I may be preaching to the choir here, but they're good for twenty years...
That's what's fixed, that expires after that.
And then, they have to give seventy-five percent, seventy-five percent of the property owners to vote to reinstate those restrictions. And I don't, I don't have any idea whether they are in effect or not, but even if they are, that would be a case between them, the courts, and him, zoning board appeals does not come into play, hang on one second.
I'm just gonna answer your question.
Yes, sir?
There are no HOA regulations, and just as he's, as he's describing, they expired a long time ago, and there are no new ones.
Okay, so at that point, you know, it, it wouldn't affect us anyway, but that's, that's the way we, we have to...
To answer part of your question, I research, is the only regulation that I needed, I thought that I needed to make because of the existing slab, was there is a city ordinance for area as far as pack, parking the RV, and it's considered a rear section of the property, and that's where the RV is being parked.
To kind of piggyback off of the discussion, he's referring to what we call the residential parking overlay. It requires that bigger vehicles, such as RVs, be parked either in the side yard or the rear yard, not in the front yard.
And side yard means from the backside of the house, not, not the front wall of the house, but the back wall of the house, creates the side.
And that was where I was at, trying to cooperate, or trying to meet the regulation as far as that's concerned, within, over the property existence slab.
Okay. Anything else, I mean, Raymond, I'm sorry. Uh, any questions, any discussions from the board, from Mr. Connor?
Um, yes, I do have one question. Um, this, uh, whose house is this right here?
Dot Young's.
Okay, that's my question. Okay.
Okay, any other questions, any other discussion? Is there anyone else here in support of this application, and I understand the wife is here, but is there anybody else in support other than the letters we have? And the letters will be made part of all the meetings, if anybody needs to see them, I need those back where they are. Is there anyone here in opposition to this request, and we know there is, I would ask that one person, please come to the lecture, at least to start, and then give us the information you'd like us to take under advisement, and then we will go from there to see if there's other people that have other things they want to bring forward, as I said in the beginning of the meeting. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. My name is George Gamo, and I'm the current president of the Wood Valley Homeowners Association. And we wrote you a letter, which I assume you read.
You think it's packed?
Good.
Sir, can I have your address come right through?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. I live at two-six-zero-three Lakewood Drive, right across the street from Raymond.
Your house looks down his driveway, or you're one house there?
No, I'm directly across the street from him. And so, I live a little bit down the driveway, but I'm not here to talk about my view. I'm here to tell you that the homeowners association board opposes the RV cover. And our reasons are that we believe that the frame is too large, and it's an inappropriate structure for a neighborhood as, as ours. Plus, we also believe that the concrete pad is too large. Raymond talks about the dimensions, and it's, it's nearly three feet high, and it exacerbates the imposing view of the structure, because it raises it higher. You looked at a picture showing the view from the back from Dorothy Young, who's here. She sent you also a letter that has photographs, I won't go through that, but I would make, want, want to make some comments about the view from that part of the, of the street, because of the general slope of the land going from where my house and Raymond's house are toward the river. In addition to the points that we made in our letters, there have been many, many neighbor complaints. Many have stopped across the street, in the road, in front of Dot's house, looked up her driveway, and made very negative comments. One of the most common things that was said spontaneously by many people, and I think I cited this in my letter, "We are becoming a trailer park." And that was said many, many times. I think our biggest concern, however, is the loss of land value. And we've had realtors examine it and have admitted that, that land value will decrease, and I think we were hoping that in your review criterion, where you're saying that something shouldn't substantially diminish or impair property values, we think this does, and as such, we oppose it. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else would like to give us any additional information?
Can I just say?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Dot Young, I live at six-six-zero-three North Sherwood Drive, right in the front of Raymond. I've sent a letter and pictures because I can jury prove this, and I want to see, so I'm, I'm here, and I just wanna make a couple of comments, and you've got the pictures and everything, it's right there. The impact is the greatest on myself, since I'm right behind Raymond. From inside my house, all of the windows on the back, when I go outside the back door, that's the only thing that you see, is the big curb. It shows in the pictures that I gave you. The first one shows from my back, the second and third ones are taken from the windows on the back of my house. And the fourth one is looking at it from my street, North Sherwood Drive, straight up my driveway. I agree with what George has said, and I have many residents stop, get their cameras out, take a picture, they come to my door, they ask me about it. This subdivision has been there a long time, and there are a lot of us that have been there thirty, thirty-five plus years. And this is the first time that we've had an issue like this. It looks like an airplane hunter, that's all that I can say, it just, is so tall that it just sticks out like a silver thumb. I just oppose it. I've had realtors to come and look, I've had a landscaper, I've had a contractor to all come and give them opinions, I quoted those in the letter that you had. And I, I just oppose it, I, I just, it's just, it just doesn't look right in a neighborhood like ours. I even rode all over town and looked at all of the subdivisions that are within the city, and then I went and looked in the county. And not one time did I see anything that large at any homes, in country, out eighty-four, in South Town, and I can name all of the subdivisions that we had in the city. So it's not something that you see, you just don't see one that big. So I do oppose it, and I have, if I can ask some questions about the pictures or anything, I'd be happy to.
Any questions, any discussions?
I have some questions.
Yes, ma'am.
So you understand that if we deny the variance...
Yes.
That he can take that structure down, move it ten feet to the, um...
South.
South, and put it back, and we'll still be looking at it?
But it won't be as high, is that my understanding?
It'll be just, no, it'll be just the same, he can pick it up and move it ten feet to the south, it'll still be there.
The, the point is, he meets all the regulations to have that building as it is, except being within ten feet of the north property line. The height is...
The height of the concrete.
The height, well, the concrete slab does not inflate, other than the fact that it's holding the building. If he takes the entire slab, the entire building down, the concrete slab is in total collapse.
Right, as it stands, the way that it's height has increased pretty fitting. Last week during the hurricane, that water came under my fence and just kind of struck down through my garden, and ran into my yard. Within being up its height as that was.
But, well, the height didn't have anything to do with that, Miss Young, because...
No, I'm talking about the height of the concrete, I'm going on three feet.
I understand, he had concrete tears, he has concrete, you've got the same amount of it, and it's all going, going bumping.
Right, it wasn't as bad when it was not up the three feet. It seems like I'm getting more water now.
Okay, so I want to clarify, you understand that the concrete slab is gonna stay there...
Regardless.
Regardless. And he can move that building ten feet to the south and put it back, park his RV under it, and so, RV probably isn't gonna move, truck's gonna be parked, just the building's gonna be over the signs to the other.
It's fifteen feet tall.
Body beach code.
I understand was that the code is not fifteen feet high, but it is thirteen and a half.
No, code says the building cannot be taller than the highest point on his roof line.
Right, if you look at it, it's about that or higher, without us going over and physically measuring.
Yep, and you're at a disadvantage because you are on a down slope, and when you back up and look at it, it's an optical illusion to some degree that the building is higher than his house, but if you go out into the front yard and shoot a level, at least, basically what we've seen by the measurements, it is not taller than the roof line.
From his front, you're looking?
That's, well, yeah.
We're, we were looking at the end, he said, the cover, and then looking at the highest point, which is on the back of his garage, on the property.
And if, if you can visualize a huge level, and you put one end on the peak of his roof and the other end on the peak of this building, as long as it is not higher with that level, then he's in, he has met the regulations.
And did anyone measure, or say, from what you can?
From what we understand, it is several inches below the roof line, it is not as much as a foot below the roof line. Am I not right?
Right, I had a contractor tell me that if we went over and measured, that it would be tall, and you can see it, and that's all that I know of that.
The property value for my home has dropped from that. And that's from two realtors. One of the realtors is on the board of the Wood Valley Homeowners Association. And the other realtor is a realtor that we have known and used for a long time. And we worked awfully hard to keep our property up, to do major improvements, to keep it at the high level so that it would settle. And I just have so many problems with that.
I understand that. But please also, and everybody in here, please understand that there are limits to what this board can do. Even if we deny, like we said earlier, he can bring it into compliance and he would still have a smaller version, a narrower version. It's still going to be as tall. And he can do that without asking anybody's permission and that would be, I mean, there's nothing that anybody can do to prevent that.
I hope that Mr. Connor may be knowing the feelings of the Wood Valley Homeowners Association might try to work with us so that the building is not as high.
That is, that is beyond the scope of what we can tell him to do.
Do you have a question? So, so your issue is, is not the setback in the height of the structure?
Correct. Yes, sir.
My name is David Scott, I live at 2605 North Sherwood. I live one lot south of Don. And the lot in question is Catacorne, Vermont. From our perspective, we don't just see the back, we see the side of it. And it's just a big slab of 10. And I had a question for you. Was a building permit required to construct this?
Mr. Connor should have gotten a building permit.
Did he have one?
Apparently not. But at the same time, he, he had an existing structure and he did it himself. Had he, had he hired a contractor to do it, contractor will just say, we need to get a building permit. So yes, something fell through the cracks. But at the same time, this is something that we see on a regular basis here. Because not being a contractor, they are not aware of some of the rules that a contractor will say, "Hey, we got to talk to the city, we got to tell them what we're doing and get a permit."
Well, I can only tell you that in my case, first of all, we are the, for many years, but in a Volkswagen bus rather than a giant unit like this. If I had purchased a huge RV like this, I would have planned on storing it somewhere other than my house. I understand you didn't have to do that. But in any case, I think that I would have done this. But also, it seems wrong to me that someone, I mean, had I been intending to build a unit like that, I would have figured it's probably pretty questionable. And I certainly would have discovered whether I needed a building permit for it and what the rules were on what it would be. And I think it's wrong to go ahead and build it, especially a giant structure like that, and then after the fact say, "Well, I really didn't know it was there, I didn't know I had a unit."
I understand and print this, that some people say, you know, it's easier to ask forgiveness than to ask for a position. And I'm not sitting in judgment saying it was one way or the other. What we have is the situation that we have and we're trying to resolve it if at all possible.
Right, I, I understand that. But I do believe the fact that he did not get a building permit should be considered in your decision. I mean, that's the law, isn't it?
It is the rules that normally are applied. Was there something done wrong? Yes. Do we take them into consideration? This board is aware that this has happened.
One last thing. This went up so fast. I came home one day, parked the car, heard some banging, looked over and I thought, "Oh, my gosh." I had no idea this was going to happen. That's all I can say.
I have a question, I have the same question as I had for him. You understand that he can move it 10 feet? And you'll still be looking at that ugly slab?
I understand.
Okay.
I, I...
It may, it may not be.
I, I mean, I didn't know that. I mean, I figured this thing is so unsightly that there's no way it can be allowed. And it is so bad, it's unbelievable. That's from our house.
I understand. And like I said, and Ms. Fordham, he meets, first off, there's no regulations on the slab. He can put any size slab out, he can pave the entire backyard if he wanted to. There's nothing to stop him from doing it. He can build it right up to the property. The height of the building, as long as it is not an upslope to the west from his peak on his roof to that building, as long as it's flat or sloping down even ever so slightly, it is according to code. He can modify that building to move the northern wall 10 feet.
I understand.
Or he can pour some more concrete and pick the whole thing up, screw it over 10 feet and put it right back there.
No, I, I understand. I, I can only say that I never would have done this to me. That's it.
I understand, yes.
I have a question. So you're only really in opposition of the height of the structure?
I am. I mean, I understand I can't do anything about that, which comes as a surprise to me. But the, the height, it's, it's much higher than ours. And it's very unsightly. And I agree with Miss Young that it almost certainly decreased the value of our homes. And I know that is near the problem and that's fine, but I think that needs to be considered.
Well, and the other thing, when the zoning rules and regulations are put into effect, they try to be as fair as they can to every lot now. At the same time, Miss Young and you and some of the others are at a big disadvantage in that Wood Valley is a huge slope. If that was an entire flat field out there, it would not be near as noticeable because you would be on par with it instead of looking at it. And I understand that, you know, it is what it is. You are working. Is there anyone else? Yes, sir.
I, I feel that, I just have a statement, a question. I feel that this was put up unpermitted. There should be a penalty and I think that in your consideration, you should make him move that 10 feet. Thank you.
Yes, sir. And just to arrest me if I'm not wrong, he will have to buy a permit after the fact and there is a penalty financially in there?
He is in court now. Actually, his code enforcement is working with him to rectify the situation. I do not know if Judge Bender, if it goes through the court system. I don't know what fines Judge Bender might be paying.
There, there is a possible... Quickly, Raymond, is there anyone else would like to speak in opposition or we got any information? Raymond, quickly, keep raising your hand, quickly.
Couple of things. Number one, I, okay, sorry. The reason for the height of the slab has nothing to do with wanting to build the thing up. In order to build that cover, the builder or the guy borrowing from says you've got two inches of height variance to play with from the base support beams. In other words, if the thing ain't leveled or the two inches off, they can't, it can't be a structure. That's the reason for the height of it based on the slope of the land. Yep, it's leveled. And I realize it's leveled starting up at the southern end of it going north. And everything gets, the slope is extreme on the northwest corner, so that's the reason this slab is higher. All I can say is in addition, like I said, I'm more than willing to build buffers as far as to create a buffer between. If there's a high tissue, no way I'm going to be putting 20, 40-foot seaters out there, but there, even the, like I said, the article says there'll be, within three years, there'll be a 15 to 20-foot.
I got a question for you.
Yes, sir.
How long have you owned the RV?
Since, like...
How long?
Since, since...
Where did you park it before you constructed it?
I didn't actually physically pick it up till the end of June. So for about a month, I parked it off-site. A few times before it was ready, I had to park it on the street, which also causes a problem. Streets out there are very narrow and my neighbors can tell you, there ain't a whole lot of room when you park something on the street like that. And if we go on a trip, it's a two or three-day load of, you get everything, anything ready to go.
Is this the first RV or living, a mobile trailer that you have had since you've lived there?
Yeah, that I don't guess. I borrowed one and that was like pop-up camper back. We're talking the most smaller and all that sort of stuff. This is something we plan on going across country. So we got to have something we can survive in.
Okay, thank you, Lee.
All right.
Okay, any other questions, any other discussions?
I have one more. I apologize if I tear your name up, but Dr. Anne, Anne?
It's Gomo, it's French, a French name, yes.
I apologize.
That's fine, just call me George, please.
How many residents are members of the HOA now?
Hang on, I'll get those data for you.